Okay, this is all this meeting, George, stand for the class.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I like everyone's looking at you. Everyone's staring at us.
I think it's put over there in the corner.
Roll call. Here.
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 Present.
Okay, first item on our agenda is presentation on appointments for the senior center advisory board.
Thank you, your honor. I've loved being an ex-fatior member of the senior center advisory board, and I'm privileged to announce two of our applicants for, to start serving two new terms. One's returning, Ruth Nelson, and then a new one, Thelma Downing. And their applications in your packet, but I offer a motion to appoint them to new terms on the board.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Allison Howe, a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor of the appointment? Signify by aye.
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 Post. Say nay.
Motion carries. You will let them know?
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is presentation of our annual report from the volunteer fire department. Chiefs Frasco and, nope, looks like Troy's gonna, Trey's gonna do it. Just gonna throw you to the wolves, huh?
Yeah, I guess so. Good evening, mayor, council. How we doing tonight?
Hi.
Good. Well, it's been a busy year for us. You guys can see in your packets that our call volume is up, which is good and bad, but we are sustaining and making sure we're going to all the calls. Our firefighters per call is up, even though our membership is down a little bit. As of tonight, we're at 30 members. So it's been fluctuating here and there, so, but the guys have really been stepping up and making sure they answer the radio and making sure the calls and all the trucks are rolling out of the barn. So last year, we took delivery of our new rescue unit in the end of April, first of May. So that truck is all in service and ready to go, and we've been running quite a few calls with it. So also, we took our first steps towards the cancer epidemic with our department by getting the second set of gears for each of our firefighters. Also, the gear extractor came with that last year. So basically, it's to clean all the gear and make sure we get all the soot and everything off of our gears after each fire that we go to. So also, as you can see, we did a lot of training last year. As of 35 members, we logged almost 2,500 hours of training, which is 71 hours per With that, we had 340 auxiliary hours. That's not our Tuesday night meeting hours. That's extra time that the guys went out and did training on their own. We did send guys to Indianapolis last year, and I believe we had some guys go do some more medical training out in Maryland at the National Fire Academy. So just a couple other things we do. Our rookies of the, did the, another 600 hours of training minus the Tuesday nights, minus the auxiliary hours. So that was another 100 hours for each one of our rookies that went through our rookie program and became permanent members. So practices are pretty much on par where we usually are, about 25 members. And each year with ISO, we are required to have leadership training. So in the leadership training we do, each officer has to do so many hours per year, and that was 156 hours with, average about 26 hours per officer. So that's on top of everything else that we do. So that's all I have right now, so I'll turn it over to John real quick.
Your fluctuation in volunteers, is that from retirements or?
You know, we did have two guys retire this year, so I mean, yeah, we're getting up in the age where we have the 10 years are, are starting to dwindle down and stuff like that, but a lot of it's jobs and stuff like that. We've had quite a few guys here and there because of jobs, you know, take positions outside of the city and move outside of the city. So we did have two members retire this year, so that, you know, doesn't hurt you, but we gained those back. So in my years, I think it's about norm. I mean, you get two to three a year, and you might lose two or three a year, so.
Do you have to live in city limits to be a volunteer?
No, you do not have to, you have to live in our district, basically. So our district consists of County Road Double B, I believe, down to County Road I, and then County Road 10. But we don't, we kinda, you know, to County Road 24. I mean, if you live so far out, sometimes I really think about putting you on, because by the time you get to the station or whatever, pretty much the call could be over, so.
Gotcha. Any other questions for?
Good job.
Chief.
All right, I'll turn it over to John. John does all of our fire marshal duties and inspections, so.
Good evening, Mayor Ron Shaver and city council members. This document serves as my 2019 annual report for the Fire Prevention Bureau. Fire prevention month and public education activities. I need to thank the nine volunteer firefighters that went above and beyond the fire prevention month. Yet again, I couldn't have done it without their support and desire to help educate the youth in our community. We effectively completed six presentations to five public schools and seven presentations to six private schools, 1,320 students and staff members that were contacted this year, along with the 20 volunteers that assisted with the semi-annual open house activities with 101 adult and children in attendance. Under fire extinguisher training presentations, within seven classes, including the first annual Morgan One tenant training class, Morgan Community College, and our own open house at Station One during prevention month, we just over 230 students and citizens received hands-on training. Fire safety surveys, 160 businesses were inspected with about a 70% compliance rate on the first inspection. Inspections included RE3 School District, Colorado Plains Medical Center, nursing homes, group homes, daycares, counseling centers, restaurants, mercantile, and industry. Chief building official and fire marshal working together for consistency. I also participated within our own intergovernmental department activities by working on 54 plan reviews and 168 scheduled calendar events. These, these events included but not limited to feasibility form, interviews, pre-construction meetings, field inspections during these building inspection concept process, which then leads to first inspection along with a certificate of occupancy or a letter of compliance issued by the city of Fort Morgan. And then under my specialty items, responding to fire safety concerns from the public, assisting with smoke detectors and other fire-related questions or concerns. Throughout the year, I attend and maintain continuing education that I need for recircification within the state of Colorado or National Circulation Institute. Primary locations for the Fire Marshals Association of Colorado, offering bimonthly training, and the International Code Conference. Respectfully submit, John Zink, your fire marshal.
Thanks, John.
Thank you so much.
I do, I have a comment.
Okay.
Okay, to the fire department. Last year, I studied a little bit about your ratings and how you get them, and you have a great rating for a little town. It was, I was real proud of it. Also, the art community, they're doing art walks once a month on Thursday nights, and they contacted me, and since the fire department and the city hall is on Main Street, they asked if we would be open to have them come down here sometime, especially in the warmer weather, and the fire department could have some of their trucks, and I know you have an antique truck. So I think it'd be really good, because they're getting to be really popular, so it'd be a fun way to share who you are with them. So I'll talk to you sometime about it. They asked me about it, so I thought it might be a good time to say they're interested in you, so.
Absolutely, yeah, just get ahold of us, and we can make something work.
Yeah, okay, when it's warmer and the nights are, are light, so.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, and tell your crew and all the volunteers that we appreciate the job they do for us.
Absolutely, I'll pass it on.
Absolutely.
Thank you guys for everything you do for us also.
Thank you all.
Next is presentation of the annual report for Fort Morgan PD. Mr. Chrome.
Good evening, mayor and council. Similar to fire departments, we're gonna kind of pass on the 2019 summary of some things. To start out with, I'm sure each of you spent some time kind of looking at our statistics and maybe did the same thing I didn't, kind of question what the actual numbers were. So last week, I started looking at some stuff, trying to compare the 27, 18, 20, 2017, 2018, and 2019. And basically, what it came down to, trying to duplicate the same format again for 2019. Things didn't start making sense, so I did further review up until actually late this afternoon. What it comes down to is the numbers are not accurate for 27, 18, 20, I'm sorry, 2017, 18, and 19. So obviously, we need to provide accurate data on there. I was, tried to duplicate the stuff, I was not able to duplicate any of the numbers that I was given, this being the first year that I've actually done this. So that being said, I decided to set up a procedure to start compiling this information to make sure it's accurate, it's reproducible, and to where we don't have this issue again in the past. I think it's very important to be transparent on something like this, and I freely admit that we don't have the accurate numbers. I do have the accurate numbers now. I don't want to spend a time trying to go over the accurate numbers. I think it's probably a lot simpler to go through the process of correcting them after the fact, and that's what, what I will do. I know Mr. Rand did an article earlier this week, Monday, actually, I guess, to point it out, kind of a question about percent, I'm sorry, the clearance rates. Again, those are not accurate. It does make us look bad, but I guarantee you, we're pretty consistent over, I actually went back the last 10 years, and the consistency on juvenile arrests, adult arrests, clearance rates and everything, they're actually fairly consistent year to year. So that being said, I'll get into the rest of the annual report. I think for 2019, one of the biggest things was we continued to training, or focus on our training. I think it's very important. It's something that over the last few years, we've really increased and much for the better. Part of that is the supervisor-related courses that we've been sending a lot of our supervisors to, to include just regular in-service training, out of, out of office training as well. We sent two more people to the 10-week Northwestern University Police Staff and Command Course. I completed that course a little over a year ago. We sent two more people in 2019. It's a 10-week-long course, definitely, definitely worthwhile. We currently have somebody attending the FBI National Academy. It's somewhat equivalent, much different format, but it's fairly similar to where, again, we've never had that in the past, the entire 29 years that I've been here. We've also had supervisors complete the incident command system. Every time supervisors are promoted, they're required to do a couple different levels of incident command courses. They've completed that. And obviously, when it comes down to how much training we have as to what the cost is, we got $39,000 reimbursed last year alone from the state for training. So it ends up being pretty much a wash on any of the, the training that we spend. Another key thing, additional assignment of a school resource officer. We now have an officer full-time in Fort Morgan High School and also the Fort Morgan Middle School. Middle School, School Resource Officer also assists the other grade schools as needed based on whether they're putting on programs, maybe they're having a problem with a child that maybe law enforcement can assist with. So it's not just the middle school alone, but that's pretty significant, especially with the size of town that we have. We now have three unmanned aerial system or drone pilots, basically licensed by the FFA. Again, for our size of town, extremely rare. We completed equipping a command vehicle. We started about two years ago, trying to purchase a vehicle, put some equipment, and we finally got everything that we needed inside there, and it'll help on-scene major incidents as needed. So far, we haven't completely had to deploy that yet, but it's a good asset if we need it. We also received some equipment that we put in for in 2017 and 2018. It finally took, took this long to finally get the equipment, paid for by grants, a negotiation phone, and what we call alternate life source package that we use for crime scenes. And really, our continued focus and concern is about recruiting viable police officers. We've attended several recruiting events throughout the state last year, and we're planning on sending more people. One of the key things is sending people to an academy instead of just waiting on certified officers to apply for us or trying to recruit certified officers. We're finding that if we can get local people that truly have ties to Fort Morgan or Morgan County, the area itself, we're having a better, better luck with that, keeping those people employed, or not just employed, but keeping them around and not going to different agencies. So that's worked out fairly well for us. That being said, I guess, anybody have any questions?
So really quick, going back, this key statistical data, 17, 18, and 19 is not accurate that we were receiving?
Yeah, majority of it's not, and I think I've got a fairly simple chart that I can put out to everybody. My plan is to email the council to include the Fort Morgan Times with updated information on that. I know, I think John Burnett also keeps this as an actual document, the 2019 review, similar to 2018. It'll be updated, little bit explanation as to some of the numbers, not just the numbers, but actually explain a little bit more as to what this data really mean, what it really means, and I'll give you something, a fairly simple example. It might be interesting to know how many tickets we write, but in all honesty, it's not that simple as to a ticket. There might be three different charges on one ticket, so what's accurate? Is it the amount of tickets or the amount of charges? We could have a traffic ticket, which has a traffic charge, and on that same ticket could have a criminal charge, okay? Could be, we write somebody for a no-stop sign, and we find some kind of illegal paraphernalia, you write them a ticket for that on the same ticket. So it's not actually accurate. I'd like to look at some more data, not just data, but what it is we're actually putting out to make it more, more accurate for one thing, and also more indicative of this is really what we're doing. And I don't think tickets in and of itself is a true indicator of anything that we're doing. So there's a lot more to it that can go into it. I just prefer to get everything done kind of all at once and explain everything, and then that way, come 2021, we're doing the 2020 review, it's going to be much more accurate.
What information can you share with us about the countywide drug task force?
Fort Morgan is one of the agencies involved, us and Borish Police Department. We put in for a grant in early, about February, I think of last year of 2019. Borish Police Department's one actually put forth that grant, who was approved, we're waiting on the applicant, or not the application, we're waiting on the money to come from the federal government. The federal government then goes to the state. My understanding is, state of Colorado can be considered a sanctuary state, hence the reason it's going through the courts now. So it's truly Borish Police Department, it's their grant, but we're included in that to fund a full-time additional investigator, to include potentially a part-time records staff and some of the management of that. So again, it's not our specific grant, but we're included in that. Once the money's actually released, then that's the plan anyway. But the last I heard, and I don't know how, how accurate it is, June or July might be what we're looking at. But first time I heard was February, then I heard March, and now it's June, July, so.
Okay, thanks for the update.
Okay.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jared. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance 1242, an ordinance vacating that portion of a right-of-way of Lincoln Street, south of East Beaver Avenue and north of East Kiowa Avenue. This is a public hearing. Please keep public comment to the issues before city council. Each speaker is asked to limit comment to three minutes unless a speaker represents a group of citizens, in which additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate and under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to these issues, and to set a time limit on the duration of testimony if I determine it to be necessary in light of the number of persons who have signed up to testify. First is a legal notice. Mr. Brennan, was this properly noticed?
Yes, your honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on February 7.
Next presentation of the ordinance, Mr. Gleymer.
All right, good evening, mayor, members of the council, thank you. What you have in your packet tonight is an ordinance that will vacate a portion of Lincoln Street. This is between Beaver Avenue and Kiowa Avenue, across the Baker School property. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago. This is the second and final step in that process, the public hearing process. We don't have anything new to add to your, for your information, other than, we talked about the easement at the last meeting, and I indicated that we would need a 20-foot wide easement, but with the addition of the second utility that we discovered, that is the gas utility that goes across, or we actually widened that to 30 feet, and we were successful in getting that signed by the school district. We received that today. So we're good to go on this and be able to vacate this right-of-way with the easement that we've got in place at this point. So I've not received any comments on this item into my office, so staff would recommend approval of the ordinance on second and final reading tonight, so be happy to answer any questions.
Just for everybody's edification, by giving away the right-of-way or whatever else, that just means that we don't have to take care of the pavement, we don't have to keep it clean, and all that sort of stuff, that it just falls over onto the school district then, because it becomes their right-of-way or their property.
Correct, yeah, the property reverts back to the, the property owners on each side of the right-of-way, and in this case, that's one property owner, the school district, so they maintain the property at that point, including the section that we reserve an easement as well. There's no pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk across this, because it's really just, you know, playground space and these types of things, but they maintain and own that property at that point. Yep, good question. Any other questions I can answer?
I just wanted, you already answered about the easement, so that was my only question.
Awesome, thanks. Okay, very good, thank you.
Next, we'll hear public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I would ask the clerk if you received any overwritten comments prior to this hearing.
Not through my office, your honor.
Comments by council?
No.
None? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Salute.
Second. Have a motion to close by Kevin Lindell and a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Same sign. Motion carries. Council action, Ms. Williams.
Yes, your regular options here for an ordinance, approving, denying, or amending, and good language is on the, you know, the first page of the agenda, a resolution approving second and final reading of the ordinance, and authorization to publish by title only.
I would entertain a resolution approving a second and final reading.
Your honor, I offer a resolution approving a second and final reading of ordinance number 1242, an ordinance vacating the portion of the right-of-way of Lincoln Street, south of East Beaver Avenue and north of East Kiowa Avenue, and authorizing it published by title only.
Second. Have a resolution by Doug Sashow and a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a presentation on two bids for a digital electronic message board signs. Mr. Gleymer.
Okay, thank you. This item in your packet is for authorization to purchase two more variable message signs. You'll remember, we bought two of these early last year that we've been using to notify of street closures or various events, particularly for Thursday Night Live. They became very handy for notification of those events, that we'd have the street closed. And so we always talked about getting two more of these when the budget would allow. It allows us to control an entire intersection in the case that we would have to shut something down for a major utility break or something of this nature. So this is what we've done, is bid that out for two more of those. Last year, we only got two bids. This year, we were very successful to get several bids, seven in fact. The product that we're looking for this year is a little different than the ones we bought last year from at least a different company, but these are all pretty much very similar in scope and the way they're programmed. So JW and I have talked about them. He's really comfortable that now that he understands how to program the ones we have, that he won't have any problem getting these programmed as well. Good prices this year. We are recommending the K and K system that has the hydraulic lift versus the manual lift. It's about $800 more, but the guys like the hydraulic lift with the ones that we have. The signs do have to go up into the air, and it's, it saves on the, on the shoulders and the backs of the guys when they're trying to lift those. So I think for $800, that's probably money well spent, but you can see the bids there, and so we're recommending the K and K system for $24,677.34, and that's right onboard to Fort Morgan, so happy to answer any questions that you might have about this bid.
We get two of them for $24,000.
Yep, that's to buy two.
And I love that multiple departments use them, so you guys, yeah, they get a lot of use.
Steve, about 10 years ago, I recommended that with the police department. It would never, we never got off the line and did anything with it, but I saw a little town up there by you, where you came from, Gunnison.
Oh, yeah.
Gunnison had them out for their Halloween night, and I've just been up there elk hunting, and I thought that was really, really cool.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, they come with all kinds of nice preloaded graphics and things you can do for 4th of July or Halloween or various Christmas things, and so once we get better, you know, understanding them and using them, I think we'll really be able to get them out there, so.
I thought it, I thought it was an excellent idea, prom night, you know? So kudos, bud, you did good.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid from K and K Systems, not to exceed the amount of $24,677.34.
Second. Have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Next is a presentation on bids for a fuel car reader for the airport.
Yeah, okay, so I'm still here, but this is another bid that we've had out, one we've been looking for for a while. Our fueling system at the airport, the card reader system, went out some time back, and we had this out to bid and didn't receive any bids, and so we had to put it back out, and fortunately, we were able to get two bids this time. This is for a replacement system similar to the one that we have. We have an MB 3,000, this is the MB 4,000, so a little bit of an upgrade, but the last system was installed in 2010, so it's definitely passed its life. The airport's desperate for it. They've been having to manually load fuel, and that makes it impossible to do at night, so if somebody comes in and, and all the staff's gone, they can't get fuel. So we're ready to get this thing onboard. We budgeted $20,000. I'm gonna ask for the full amount. I'm not sure what we're gonna get into when we get into the conduits. I'm pretty sure we're able to pull all the wiring through that we need to, but we may need to install additional conduit or something, so I'm looking for a little contingency over the bid amount. The bid was for $14,904, that's, that's the low bid. So they asked tonight is for not to exceed expenditure to $20,000, and we'll keep that down. If we don't need to spend it, we won't. So happy to answer any questions on this one.
I see they charge 10 cents per blank card.
Yeah, we'll probably buy a few cards. You can use credit cards or other types of cards on the system, but if you want to log a card through us, we can, we can do that as well. There's a way to do that, and so we'll buy several cards so that we have them available.
That would be for people that are based here out of Morgan's Airport and that.
Yeah, we'll probably get 100 of those, just to have them. They're cheap, so.
Exactly.
So, do you want that to be for $20,000 or the actual bid? Okay.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I offer a resolution on bids for a fuel card reader for the airport in the amount of $20,000 from Petroleum Equipment Maintenance LLC.
Second.
Have a resolution by Lynn. Have a resolution by Lynn Deal, a second by Allison Howe, vote by roll call?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you, guys, I'll be back, yeah.
Thanks, Steve. Next is a presentation on bids for a three-reel conductor poly trailer for the electric department. Mr. Linton?
Good evening, Mayor, council, in front of you tonight, I'm asking for a three-reel conductor poly pipe trailer. The line power department current, we use our flatbed trailer with the wire reels fabricated by our staff, so it's all built in-house, for pulling in underground wire, overhead wire, now we have the fiber, and now we have fiber conduit. So, to accomplish this, we gotta take everything apart, put new reels on, so tonight, I'm asking you for a trailer, that we can do all this without having to move racks off, and put equipment on, and then, equipment off, and racks back on, so. I had three bids, it went out to bid January 13th, we received them on the 29th of January, and Brooks Brothers was the lowest bid, at $51,952, so staff is requesting council approval to accept the bid from Brooks Brothers in the amount of $51,952 for a three-reel conductor poly trailer.
And so, where this says a three-reel conductor, it's a trailer that just has three reels, that's why you don't have to change it out?
Right, I don't have to pull the reels off, and put my trencher on, so this trailer comes with three reels on it, and there, we can move them up and down, put poly reels on it, that are really tall, or wire reels that are shorter.
Sleek?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Saves time.
It's specifically for?
It's specifically for reels of cable and pipe.
Cool.
So, we can do underground, we can do overhead.
Build another one.
Them poor guys, they left them racks off, they use the digger truck now, we're all getting old.
Any questions?
No.
Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid from Brooks Brothers for $51,952 for a three-reel conductor poly pipe trailer.
I left the pipe off, I don't know why, but I did.
Well, you mentioned when you first introduced it, and I loved it, so.
Shortened it up.
Okay, I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Brian Erdy-Allis, vote by roll call?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Next is a presentation on bids for a four-wheel drive half-ton pickup for the water distribution department, Mr. Sagal?
Thank you, Mayor and council, tonight, I'm seeking approval to replace a 2006 Chevy Silverado, a half-ton pickup, that has just over 92,000 miles, and the, it continues to increase in cost for maintenance every year, and several items seem to be going out on it, so it's kind of reached its end of life for our department, and so, I'm seeking to replace that. So, we put bids out on December 20th, 2019, we did receive, we had one addendum, just for clarification, and we did receive one bid, and luckily, it was from a local, it was Ehrlich Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram, and, so, staff is requesting council approval to accept the bid from Ehrlich Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram, in the amount of $37,500 for the four-wheel drive half-ton Ram 1500 Big Horn pickup to be utilized by the water department. Then I am also requesting to purchase options, one of them is the extended warranty, and then, all of the required items that will need to be installed on the pickup to be able to utilize it for daily operations, including warning lights, and miscellaneous decals, things of that nature. So, therefore, staff is requesting council approval of expenditures not to exceed $45,000 for the purchase of a four-wheel drive half-ton Ram 1500 Big Horn, additional options, warning lights, decals, and miscellaneous items to complete the truck for city use. Do I have any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I don't know if you can answer this, what do you do with the old 2006 pickup, with 92,000 miles on it?
Uh, well, I am planning on putting it on the auction, we're just gonna auction it off, so, yep.
The city currently uses GovDeals, that's the name of it, it's an auction site that government entities use, and we run that through the procurement department, and so, when we have equipment that needs to be disposed of, the managers know what process to go through, you submit pictures, a description of it, in this case, everything goes with the vehicle title and everything, and then we get rid of those, and we try to keep those things out of the inventory as quickly as we can, it's something we just started within the last year, and it seems to be working pretty well, we've gotten rid of several vehicles that way.
They move pretty quick?
Yeah, they do, you, you set those timeframes on there, and tell, tell the system just exactly how long you, you have to bid on it, and so, they seem to move pretty quickly.
Is there any ability to use some of the accessories off of that for this new one?
Unfortunately not, the warning lights that I would like to just move over, they no longer work. And then the decals are a one-time use, so, the tools and everything, yes, they will be transferred over, so, and toolboxes of that, and things of that nature, yes, so.
So, you think the warning lights need to work then, huh?
I, I would prefer it.
Okay. And do you guys need a four-wheel drive for this one?
Uh, yes, it's, it needs to be utilized in winter conditions as well, it will be our primary travel truck for training, and for certification, recertification, and certification, so out of town travel, this truck will be utilized for that, so.
I've been letting them use my truck to travel out of town, just because I've been in this truck several times, and didn't feel it the best of condition to be taking it to Denver on a regular basis, so this is definitely one of the ones that needs to come out of the fleet.
Any other questions for Mr. Sagal? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid from Ehrlich Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram, not to exceed $45,000.
Second. Have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell, vote by roll call?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Next is a presentation on bids for a full-size 3/4-ton crew cab truck for the wastewater collection department. Mr. Sagal?
Thank you, Mayor and council, on this one, this is of course for the wastewater side of the, of the departments, and we are looking to, looking for approval to replace a two-wheel drive, right now, it's a one-ton pickup with a little over 111,000 miles on it, and it's, again, it's starting to see its end of life, we've had to replace many things on it, and it just seems like something new is going wrong on it. We currently have this one set up as a flatbed, in order to haul manhole lids, rings, adjustment rings, things like that, so we can get them to, whenever we have to make adjustments or replace manhole lids, and so, that's what we're wanting to replace with, is another flatbed pickup. The, the one-ton, really, the 3/4-ton can do more than what this current one-ton can do, so we feel that a 3/4-ton is sufficient for what we need it for. We do have one trailer that we have to haul with, and that's our easement equipment, our easement jetting machine, so it's definitely sufficient for, for hauling that, and, so, we did, this one went out the same time as the last one, it was on December 20th, we had two addendums, just for clarification, and, from the bidder questions, and we did, again, receive one bid, and that was from Ehrlich Chrysler Jeep Dodge again. So, staff is requesting council approval to accept the bid from Ehrlich Chrysler Jeep Dodge, the initial bid was for $43,200 for a four-wheel drive 3/4-ton Ram 2500 Tradesman pickup, with a PJ utility flatbed to be utilized by the sewer department. Staff is also requesting to purchase the additional options, including warranty, remote start, auto leveling for the suspension, and then, of course, we will also be looking at warning lights, decals, miscellaneous, and then this truck will also have a plow, and so, that's, that's why I'm requesting a little bit more, is because we want to purchase a plow for this truck, so we can do our snow maintenance within the, the city complex, which is our, our responsibility, so, therefore, staff is requesting council approval of expenditures not, expenditures not to exceed $58,000 for a purchase of a four-wheel drive 3/4-ton Ram 2500 Tradesman flatbed, with additional options, warning light, decals, and miscellaneous items to complete the truck for city use. Do I have any questions?
So, you're looking to put a snow plow on this as well?
Yes.
What's the auto leveling?
Auto leveling is the suspension, so if you put, whenever you're putting weight on the back of it, it will keep the truck at the same height off the road, it saves on the suspension, and it's, it's better for travel, so it's not...
Airbag?
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Sagal?
No.
Would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution on bids for a full-size 3/4-ton crew cab pickup truck for the wastewater collection department.
Have a resolution by Lynn Deal, and a second by Clint Anderson, vote by roll call?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Next is a presentation on bids for a refuse truck, and a packmore refuse unit for the sanitation department. Mr. Gleyer-Meyer?
Yes, thank you, I'm back like a bad penny. Bobby couldn't be here tonight, he's got the flu, so I told him I could pinch hit for him, he's, he was willing to table it, but I said, "No, I gotta be there anyway, so let me help you out," so, Bob has on here tonight a couple of items for your consideration, replacement of a sanitation truck and packmore unit, we're replacing a unit that's got 93,000 miles, it's a 2013 unit, pretty much at the end of its life, these trash trucks, as you know, they're, they rode pretty hard, so they don't last a long time, and they're also very expensive. We, looks like we received three bids on the truck, and one bid on the packing unit, that doesn't surprise me, these packing units are pretty specialized pieces of equipment, so, one bid on that doesn't, doesn't surprise me. So, we're recommending the McCandless International low bid for the truck, which is $84,986, and the only bid on the packmore compaction unit, which bid at $113,98, but it comes with a $21,000 trade-in, so we actually only spent $92,098. Add those two together, we come up with $177,084. The budget on this unit's $225,000, I think we'll ask for a little bit to outfit this as well, any additional lights that may be needed, cameras, decals, radio, so maybe a not-to-exceed price of $185,000 should get everything that we need for this unit. These take a long time to get, in fact, we bought one of these last year that we still don't have, so hopefully, we'll get this before the end of the year, and I don't have to roll this over into the 2021 budget, but that's what we had to do with the 2019, we rolled it into this year's budget, so hopefully, we get them both this year.
When they do a trade-in, do we take that in, and they remove it and take it off, or?
You know, Ron, that's a great question, that I don't know the answer to, I wish Bobby was here tonight to answer that, I'm not sure how that works.
Do we get any trade-in value for the chassis?
No, with any luck, we could sell that unit, but if we're trading the pack unit in, you know, it's just a truck at that point, so if it's available to throw on GovDeals, that's exactly what we'll do with it, and, and try to sell it that way, somebody, there's always somebody out there in the market for old equipment, and somebody will buy it, probably not for a lot of money, but if we can sell it, we will. Good question.
When we sell those, does that go back into that enterprise fund of what they sell?
For Genie, I think.
Good evening, Mayor and council, to answer your question, it goes back in as a gain on sale of equipment, but only if it exceeds the amount we have on the previous. If we've fully depreciated the previous, then we have a gain, otherwise, according to accountants' rules, we don't. The other thing that's interesting to point out, I think, is that when you, anyway, I find it interesting, that when you purchase something for a certain value, it will go on the books at that value, so when we add the two numbers together, we should be adding the larger number to compare whether or not we've met budget. That's okay, we know in our hearts that we got money in, and so, we go over budget, but when, when we're projecting things in the budget, we need to be projecting them at, without regard to the, to that...
Trade-in.
Trade-in value, yeah, okay?
Any questions?
Okay, any other questions?
So, for, so, he needs, is just accepting the two bids, but also giving some wiggle room, so, you said 185 is what he needs?
Yeah, 185 is what we'll, you know, we're gonna write a check for that, but to Genie's point, I think the value of the unit is gonna be the 113 and the 85,000, you know, those two together is what the actual value will be. Yeah. Correct.
Okay, any other questions? Then I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bids from McCandless International, and the bid from American Transportation, for a total not to exceed, is it? So, we're still happy with 185? I'm just...
Yeah.
Okay, 185,000.
Have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Doug Sashow, vote by roll call?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a presentation on bids for sanitation containers from the sanitation department. Mr. Gleyer-Meyer?
Okay, this is our annual opportunity to buy three-yard dumpsters, so we've got bids in here from five different companies, and it looks like this year, Rolloffs USA is the low bid per unit, at $500. This is a newer company for us, but we did, the city of Sterling uses these, and they're really happy with them, so we did confirm that they liked them, and that they'd work for us, and, so, we're saving a little money, and we'll just get more containers that way, and maybe buy less next year if we need to, so, this would be to accept the bid from Rolloffs USA for $500 a unit, and we'll get as many of those as we can for the budget we have.
Any questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the unit bid price from Rolloffs USA.
Resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Doug Sashow, vote by roll call?
Resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you all, and I just maybe, take just one minute to recognize Nick Ramos, Nick's in the back, and Nick's one of our drivers, he was here tonight just to kinda observe how this process went, and wanted to learn a little more about that, so, if you wanna stand up, wave, say hi, yeah, there he is, so, just glad he was here tonight, so, thank you very much.
Thanks, welcome, Nick. Okay, next is a, is a discussion on selection and placement agent for financing of the Fieldhouse project, Mr. Nation and Ms. Kenny.
Okay, I'll let Genie make her way up to the podium, this is part of the potential finance look at the, the Fieldhouse funding, and so, we needed to get a fiscal agent involved in this, and so, Genie took care of going out to bid, to see who we could possibly use their services, and so, she's prepared, prepared the memo, and, and has all the information on who we had to look at, and who we feel we wanna select, so I'll turn it over to her.
Good evening, again, we had sent this, this bid out just shortly before, well, the day before Jeff left, and so, we had actually, you know, talked... had actually, you know, talked more about us talking together about this decision. And if there's something about it that you guys are concerned about and want to be reconsidered, I'd be happy to do that. This isn't something, I'm very, very comfortable with the selection that I've made with Nate Ekloff, but that has a lot to do with the fact that Nate has come around at the city offices ever since I first started here and way prior to that. He, in fact, gave a presentation to the council several years, well, about a year before I started, I think in 2010. He gave a presentation for some type of financing that we were considering, but then we ended up not doing anything with anyone. And so he was, it wasn't that he wasn't selected, it's just that. He worked with RBC, and RBC was involved in our loan that, where we combined all that water debt into one place. And actually, it was Wes Bradish that was really highly involved with it, not Nate. But as far as this process goes, I feel like, I mean, we sent out the requests for proposals. We got three, and of the three, I looked through all of them. I found that the one from Nate Ekloff, who is now with Piper Sandler, Piper Jaffrey changed their name just recently. So he's with that, and I felt like it was, there was a clear, he was clearly a better choice for a placement agent because of all the years of experience that he's had, the number of Colorado placements that he's done, the really good reference that he got from our school CFO, Mike Lee. And because of all those reasons, I felt like his was the best presentation. He also said he would go to 20 banks, and then, you know, he said, "We'll get maybe five out of that, but we'll go to 20." Some of the people said they'd go to five banks or at any rate, less than that. And I think that for us to get the best deal that we can get on this financing, you know, we need to check out a lot of places. And I think it might have something to do with the size of the firm, that they're able to put this out. And he's also committed to going to the banks in the city of Fort Morgan and giving them an opportunity to bid on this, because that is what will be the next step. We'll have like a kickoff meeting, and then he will go through and tell me the things I need to do, the information that I need to give him, and then we'll start with the actual, you know, obtaining the financing. And it is either going to be eight or 10 million, but he did explain to me that if we chose for it to be, if we wanted to pay $2 million, that we can actually separate the project so that there's a $2 million piece that we financed in full and an $8 million that we borrowed. Because of it being a lease financing, there's an important distinction from just a regular loan. Normally, it's like they want you to have 20% down, but when you do a lease financing, you're not supposed to really have equity in the project because it encourages you to continue on with the lease, which most lenders would want you to, but because of the rules, I don't know if it's the Tabor things, but because of the rules about cities and municipalities, when we do a lease financing, we're not supposed to be highly invested in it. So we'll work that out, whether it's gonna be $10 million in full that we borrow, whether we borrow $8 million and put $2 million down towards some specific section, part of the project that we can divide off or how we need to do it. But tonight, what we need to do is decide that we want to have Nate Ekloff be the placement agent who does all the footwork to make this loan happen. So, does anyone have questions?
I do. Can you kind of give me an overview, since I'm coming in on the middle of this? So they will work out the payment plan, or how does that work exactly?
I think you can start off by the lease.
Yeah, it's, we would have it set up as a lease, where we would pay an amount. Normally, leases are paid once a year. I talked with him about the possibility of monthly payments, and he said we could do that. If you make 12 payments a year, you save way more than if you make a payment every year. You know, most of the loans that we have, we don't have that option because it's been like a group of people gone together. And I, in fact, asked on that last one if we could do a monthly, and they said absolutely not. They set it up for six months entrance and interest and principal for the other payment, so it was a June and a December payment. So this is, because it's a lease like this, it is more flexible in that we can, we can set it up for, you know, 12 payments a year. And that works out really well for the city.
So how many, how many years and what, at what rate?
We're going either 10, I'm sorry, we're going either 10 or 15 years is what we're looking at. The payments, the first time it was worked out, I think the payments were like $800,000 a year if we borrowed the lower amount, the $8 million, and we went for 15 years. Of course, your payments are lower if you go that long, but then you're also paying more because you're paying interest for so long. So we haven't made that decision, but that's something that every bank that presents to us will present the numbers for 10 years or 15 years. And I'm sure that Nate will recommend to us what's better, and I think maybe if I just look at it, I'll know which is better. Because, you know, it's just like when you go to buy anything, if you decide to spread it out over a lot of time, you have those nice comfy payments, but you're paying interest like crazy, just like on a house. You pay for your house three times.
So how do you get around that the city isn't an invested owner? How does that work? I guess I'm asking some questions.
That's the lease, because it's a lease.
Yeah, it's a lease payment that you're making, and so it's kind of a lease-to-own type of situation.
Even though you own it?
Yeah, even though, and that's, it's, when it was explained to council last year, it was about November, I think, when they did the presentation on it, that it's kind of a new governmental way of financing projects of this nature. And so, but yeah, it's a lease-to-own, but you're the only one using the facility. Nobody else has, you know, nobody else can come in and take over the facility. The contracts are all set up to where it becomes the city's at the end of the term, and so...
And it was an identical loan to this that the school district took out in December of this year. I think it was for three-something million.
So you're saying if we were to remove or take some of the reserves to cut, knock down what we actually borrow is not something we want to do?
Well, I'm not saying that's not something we want to do. I'm saying that, just that Nate was, he said that there are ways to put an amount down, but not have it be like a reduction of the loan amount. So we'd put $2 million down on the facility, so we'd only have to borrow eight. And then that $8 million would be a lease, a normal lease for the, for the either, you know, 10 or 15 years that we decided to go with it.
But we would have our $2 million equity in it?
We would have, we would own that section of it. I think that's how they get away from it not being equity. We would own that section. I mean, there's nothing wrong with just going with a $10 million loan, except, well, I don't know. I would always want some money in the game.
Yeah, when we went through the budget process, that was, it was kind of at that time when the money was being allocated in November, right before we finalized the budget, the discussion was what do we need to put in there? And what ended up getting put in the budget was $8 million coming from some type of loan, and then $2 million coming from basically reserves. And so, because I think then it was kind of a traditional 20% down type of thing. So, but Nate's saying that we can work with it to where there's 20% of the project that we just go ahead and pay for, and it becomes ours, and then they just go ahead and loan the $8 million to build out the rest of the facility that we leased back, so...
Yeah, and that was an interesting thing in his proposal that I read, that none of the others had, you know, explained to me.
Is there a one-time fee to pay Nate? How is he paid?
Yes, his fee, all-inclusive fee, is $25,000. It's normally $50,000 because it's based on the amount that you borrow. The Kyle Thomas's fee was $35,000, and then there was a much lower bid from, what was that guy's? I'm sorry, I should remember.
The concept is...
The Northland Securities guy.
Fiscal agent, you get this person on board, and their efforts to find the best loan at the best rate will more than save you the $25,000. That's, you know, because their expertise is in dealing with the financial institutions directly on these types of loan procedures. And so it's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's one of those, there's, you know, there's that upfront risk to use them, but we, Northern Water uses these type of, you know, agencies all the time when we're doing different financial maneuvering and everything. And I've sat through some of these, yeah, some of these procedures before, and this is more common than I think people realize, so...
It's very interesting. You know, I'm kind of getting, coming in, in the middle, so...
Yeah, well, this part of it, the financing is, you know, this is pretty new for me as well. I know how to combine a loan, and now I know how to go get one.
Turnaround time.
Oh, that's kind of interesting, too. His was two months. From the kickoff meeting that we have, once he's notified, then it's two months until he believes we could have the money available. The one from, I keep saying they're from Minneapolis, but they've had an office in Denver for two years, so they're not really from Minneapolis. But theirs was quite a bit of, it was like three months. And then the other one was just over two, so they were very close in how long they thought it would be. And I felt like two months is probably okay. I mean, we probably don't need it rushed anymore than that because I don't know how soon we're gonna, we're planning to build.
Yeah, it'll match, it should match our timeframe pretty closely. We'll be bringing back, hopefully, a selected firm to build the facility next month. We still have to go through the final stages of that selection process, but by the time you do contracts with them and everything else, you're looking at, you know, we're at least 60 days out, if not longer, before we would be breaking ground and needing money, so...
Is that in addition to the $10 million? Is that an extra cost, or is that figured into that cost of the Fieldhouse?
No, that's in addition. I mean, if we were to take that $35,000 out of the $10 million, then we would only get, you know, the remaining as our loan. Yeah, this is his fee, because he's doing this for us, because he has a special talent and ability that we don't have. So that's the, that's the idea. And $25,000, I'm sorry, is what Nate was gonna charge. And he was giving us a 50% discount because he really, really wants to get the city's business. And I can understand that, having him, he came in 2010 or 2011, so he has been working hard at it.
So was that Kyle Thomas? He was the one that was here?
Kyle presented and explained the idea to you of how it works, and he's DA Davidson. You've probably heard of that. That's a firm in Denver, too. They had probably almost as many times that they've done this. I mean, they had a real good level of experience. I would say his wasn't as much. I mean, it was like 15 years, which is still, you know, I mean, you can learn, you can learn three, you know, but I just didn't feel like he had the level of expertise in that company. I mean, it's a good company. They're all good.
I could go back and watch that if you could give me a date, if that's recorded.
Last year?
We can find it.
I don't know the exact date.
Okay.
She should be able to.
I'll have to see if we can find that meeting.
That would help me to catch up.
You know, I do have the printout of the slides that were done.
Oh, the PowerPoint that he...
Yeah, I just, it's a printout.
Yeah, because I like the visual graphs of things, so...
Oh, sure, yeah. I have that, so I have it back at my desk. No, actually, let me see.
Just so I can, you know, take some time to study it a little bit.
Hey, doll.
I love that kind of stuff.
Because you knew that was gonna come up.
Yeah, okay.
Good job, thank you.
Probably the numbers I was talking about are more from his presentation, because these bid proposals don't really say this is how much it's gonna be as clearly as that does. That's pretty nice.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
Is that it? You're good?
I believe so. Any other questions for Ms. Kenny?
No.
Then I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution accepting the bid from Nate Ekloff, representing Piper Sandler.
Okay, I have a resolution from Allison Howe and a second from Brian Erdy Alice. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Do you have something for us, Mr. French?
I must have missed the, excuse me, good evening. I must have missed the part about leasing versus purchasing. But my thoughts are, how in the heck can we do any financing without knowing what the cost is gonna be? Are we going to just wait and see? And see what it's gonna cost, and then try to fund it from our reserves? Or are we going to try to get a little bit via the county on a tax situation? Personally, I don't think we can do anything until we know what the heck we're gonna spend on this thing. If you're gonna set it at $10 million, you know, that's a pretty good price, but what if it runs to $15 million?
Do you want me to hit on that real quick, Ron?
Yeah, please.
Appreciate the questions. I mean, you've got concerns when you start looking at a project of this price tag. Counsel has been very clear to us at staff that this project is not to come in over $10 million. We have had a lot of meetings with our architect and now our building design company to ensure that that isn't going to happen. Now, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you until we get final bids in that it's, I know the price, but we have had conversation after conversation with everybody to ensure that we're gonna end up with a product that costs $10 million or slightly thereunder, and so...
Well, what is included in that $10 million? The equipment?
Yes.
On the inside, on the outside?
Yes, all of that is, the landscaping, the parking lots, the utility infrastructure, curb and gutter, the building itself, the finishes in the building that make it usable, and then what we refer to as FFNE, and that's your final finishings that go in there that are the TVs and the chairs, the desks and all that stuff. All of that is to be under $10 million, and that's what we're working.
Can we write that on the wall up there so that...
We can't, I mean, we've, they've, this group here has made it very clear to us at staff that $10 million is, and we've had meeting after meeting with the architects and our other design teams, that $10 million is what it needs to be. And we've gone through some of the iterations that you haven't necessarily seen at a public level of, here's a very nice-looking building, whoops, yeah, we sent it to the estimator and it was $15 million. Okay, what do we now need to massage out of this and change to something that's a little more plain, but still very functional? And so we've worked through all those iterations. That's what's been going on for the last six to eight months, is getting us to a product that's still very functional, very usable, meets all of the desires of the council, but yet meets the ultimate one, being under $10 million.
The city has a committee that does voice conference with the architects and the buildings up every other week. Over all this time, every other week, they're meeting and everything to make sure that it's coming in under the $10 million and putting the little twists on it and everything, so it's not just left out there in limbo. It's been kept a close eye on. We had this conversation at a previous meeting, and it was brought up, and that was when it was specifically stated that we want a definitive price of finished, and we set it at $10 million. So this has been, and staff has done an exemplary job of working with the architects and design and the steel buildings, facilities to get this, or council has directed and asked for. So we are at a point of looking at what our, what type, what are our financing options. We've had a presentation on the leasing option, which is something that does happen in governmental entities. As Brent mentioned, Northern Colorado Water Conservancy District uses this type of funding on a regular basis. That was my question to Genie, was how much of a reserve can we utilize and still meet our leasing? So we do have a... So, um, we do have an idea of what it is. We don't have a definitive number on the interest rate we would pay or the payments that we would have, but that will be what will come in the next couple of months with going through this.
Well, that would be, that would be good if we had some idea of what in the heck we're looking at. Are we looking at a tin shed over here?
No.
No, we need a, a video, a PowerPoint of what the heck we're buying.
Ty, you got something to say?
No. Uh, we've, we've had the architects in with the final renderings of the facility. They've, they've come to council. The council has, has seen the, the final pictures. Uh, if you would like to see those, we'll, we can make sure that we get you copies.
And some of the reductions that they did is they had real, as architects do, they put jogs, they put, uh, expensive facades on there and they took out the jogs, made it a little straighter. They cut out of some expenses on what they have, but yet kept the aesthetics of it. So that was, that's what staff has been directed to do and so.
Yeah, I'd more than invite you to come over to the complex someday and either catch myself or Steve Glamire or, or Ty Hamer. And we can walk you through the current set of plans and, and show you, because there's, there's cross-sections and renderings of it and everything. And we can show you just exactly where we're at with the, the $10 million.
They can show you what the benches look like even.
Yeah.
A big part?
They can even show you what the benches look like.
Yeah, there's, there's specked out benches, there's rocks. I mean, everything in these plants.
They've done a, a good job on it. And they've come in and, and have worked diligently to meet what council has, has want, asked them to do, so.
Okay. You've answered my questions and, yeah, I'll come over and visit.
Come on by and we'll, we'll talk.
Appreciate your concerns and your questions and, and do. If you would like, go meet with any one of the three of them and they'd be more than happy to show you where we're at. I know we're gonna be sitting down to decide on the general contractor here Monday.
Yeah, Monday.
So.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. We did vote on that. We got some, okay. Next item is the consent agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight's consent agenda includes item A, approval of the disbursements and payroll for January, and item B, approval of the minutes of the February 4th, 2020 City Council regular meeting. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
Okay, I would entertain a resolution unless anybody has any questions.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Public comment or audience participation for items on, not on the agenda? Reports by officials and staff?
I guess I'll ask if there was anybody that had anything. Ty?
Should I just do a quick update on the senior center?
Come on down.
Just a quick update on the Gene Doughty Senior Center. They're probably 80% done doing the flooring. Doors are going in right now. It's really starting to take shape and look beautiful. Um, in the next week or so, we'll start working on the audio/video stuff. Speakers are in, but none of the actual electronics are in. And so, we're really close. It's pretty exciting. You should come visit. Um, Larry was there today. We walked around, gave him a tour. Uh, pretty spectacular building, so.
Thanks, Ty.
I think that was it. The only thing I was gonna add was, um, as before, I think I thank council for the ability to, um, we do spend some time and some miles outside of the city, um, trying to establish contacts and things like that for economic development, you know, bettering of our, some of our utility stuff. Uh, the last two weeks, I've spent a huge amount of time on the road. Um, I appreciate the effort that Sarah had put into, we did a little jaunt over to California for a couple of days to a trade show. Very well organized. Um, she basically just drug me around for a day. Um, I spoke when I was told to speak about the city. I think I did, did my job well, but, uh, she's already had one company reach back out to her that, um, she met with on the trade floor that wants to talk to us about some potential things here in the community. And so, uh, sometimes those things pan out quickly, sometimes they don't, but this is definitely one that has shown some promise, so. Um, I then turned around and made a quick trip out to our annual meeting with our natural gas supplier. Um, just a general, um, thing, natural gas prices are extremely low right now. Can't complain about the prices of natural gas. And so, we're hoping that with our next rate look, that maybe we can keep our rates where they're at, if not lower them a little bit. So that things in the natural gas world are really good right now, so. But with that, I'm just happy to be home and I just want everybody to know that I'm always here if you need to reach out to me. Let me know when I can help, so. Okay, thank you.
I know we have our retreat coming up and, on the 10th, is it?
Yes.
So we are gonna have all of council, directors and, um, appointed officials at this retreat?
Generally, it's the, um, council and appointed officials and the city manager and I. It's not all the directors.
Well, I'd like to see some of the directors because we're gonna be talking streets and, and that. And I know in the past, last year, we didn't have them, but in years past, we have had, um, directors and them there that, that know where council is coming from regarding, um, the streets and that. So I think it would benefit them and us to be able to all be, sit down and be on the same page and, uh, let them know what we're, we're all thinking and be able to hear from them that we're way offline, can't do that, um, it's already in, in there. So I personally would, would like to, to see some of the directors and, and that there.
Yeah.
The ones that you feel are pertinent.
Pertinent.
I think Mr. Glamire and, um, I mean, that's what we're gonna be doing is-
Yeah.
-brainstorming on projects and, and basically looking at a three-to-five-year plan, well, actually probably a one-to-two, two-to-five-year.
We'll talk about it at the director's meeting in the morning.
Just thought I would throw it out there so that we're-
Yeah, okay.
It's fun to meet who's working and, you know, getting to know.
A little more intimate situation, okay.
To see their face and who they are.
Okay.
Anybody else have any thoughts or comments on that?
No, no, sounds, can't wait.
You had vacation.
And when is it? The 10th?
The 10th of May, of March. Bids, meetings and announcements, Mr. Brandon.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, the bid list is shrinking a little bit, but still quite a few. Um, city's accepting sealed bids for 2020 HBP paving and chip seal projects until 3:00 PM on February 20th. 2020 on-call HBP paving services until 3:00 PM on February 20th. A four-wheel-drive, three-quarter-ton crew cab pickup with snowplow until 2:45 PM on February 21st. Highway 52 underpass water main relocation project until 3:00 PM on February 21st. Upfitting of three police patrol vehicles until February, 3:00 PM on February 27th. 2020 water and sewer underground infrastructure projects until 3:00 PM on March 13th. And Riverside Cemetery columbarium expansion until 3:00 PM on March 13th. Under meetings, the library advisory board is scheduled to meet next Monday, the 24th, at 4:30 PM in the community room. The planning commission is scheduled to meet the same time and place, or same time and day, 4:30 PM on the 24th, here at City Hall. And the Museum Heritage Foundation is scheduled to meet the 27th at 4:30 PM in the museum community room. The next city council regular meeting will be March 3rd at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. And just one quick announcement, uh, the annual spring cleanup will start on February 29th and run through March 8th. Um, all the details of things that are acceptable and not acceptable are on the news release on our, on the homepage of our website. And, um, they, uh, they're pretty detailed, so, um, it tells you how, how to place items and how to tie them down and things like that.
Okay. Next is, we have three executive sessions. First one is for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators. And under CRS Section 24-6-4024E, and the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Economic incentives. I would entertain a motion to go into that executive session. So.
Second.
Have a motion by Kevin Lindell and a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. That motion carries. The next executive session is for discussion of a personnel matter under CRS Section 24-6-4024F and not involving any specific employee who have requested discussion of the matter in open session, any member of this body or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or an elected official or personnel, or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters personnel, personal to ma, particular employees and the following additional details for identification purposes. Discussion of determination of former city manager. I'd entertain a motion. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Kevin Lindell, a second by Allison Howe. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign?
No.
Do a roll call.
Lynn voted no?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you, do a roll call vote with that?
It's not necessary if it's, she's the-
Well, I don't know, we don't know if five, did five people, did everyone vote yes? And are there any abstentions? Because we need five votes to go in the executive session, two-thirds. So a roll call would be helpful.
We can do a roll call.
Okay.
Ray.
Oh.
Okay, that motion, that motion carries on a vote of four to three.
So executive session is two-thirds of those present, so it would be five people. We would need five affirmative votes to go into executive session.
On that one.
So now we have-
Looks like we got them now.
No, I just changed my bag.
Okay. So it's five, four to three. And it was Erdy Alice Shasso and Deal, correct?
Yes. Okay, so that one is not the, next executive session is for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-4024E and for the conference, for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section 24-6-4024B. And the per, the following additional details for, are provided for identification. Agreement with former city manager. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Clint?
Yep, that was me.
Okay, I have a motion by Allison Howe, a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign?
Aye.
Okay, have six, one. We need a roll call on that one as well?
Yeah, might as well. Six to one with Councilmember Lindell against.
Okay. So with that, we will adjourn to executive session number one and three.